...their moderators in this evening's forum. Can you hear me in the back?
Yes.
Can you hear me in the front?
Yes.
Okay, good. We have three roles, really. One is to maintain order, then to see that standard League of Women Voters procedures are followed, and finally to explain the somewhat convoluted format that we'll be using. We believe that this format will be fair to all candidates and at the same time give our audience a chance to gather information on the maximum number of voter concerns. Each candidate will have two minutes for an opening statement to be made in order from Box, in alphabetical order, actually, is what it is. And after the opening statements, one and a half minutes will be allotted for each answer to a question. And then finally, we'll allot two minutes apiece for a closing statement. To enforce these time limits, we have Kathy Nelson from League of Women Voters and Kanarik Odation from Marshall High School here. Candidates will be signaled when 30 seconds remain in any segment and also when to stop as TOP. They are not required, by the way, to use all of their allotted time. Members of the Greater Griffith Park Neighborhood Council have briefed us on some of the issues here, and David and I will be happy to use those guidelines in selecting questions from the audience. However, those questions will also be reviewed by Exander Kaden from League of Women Voters and Flora Panayoti from Marshall High School. The purpose of reviewing questions is not to exclude any person or any subject, but to ensure that we cover the broadest possible range of relevant subject matter. The task of the question reviewers has three parts. First, to eliminate or compile duplicate questions to make sure that questions can be answered by any and all candidates, and third, to make sure that questions are presented in the form of questions rather than statements. David and I will direct the questions to the candidates in a randomized order which they do not know in advance, and a candidate may choose to pass on any question. If we have a lot of extra questions toward the end, we may also do what we call a lightning round where we'll just go one question, one candidate, bing, 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 down the line. And then we'll give the candidates who didn't get a particular question an opportunity to go back to them. For the final round of this forum, each candidate may choose to make a formal closing statement or to comment on any subject raised during the earlier rounds of questioning. Two minutes will be allotted to each closing statement, given in an order reversing that of the opening statements. Finally, this is not a debate. The candidates will speak not to each other but to you, the audience, and moreover, they will speak through us, the moderators. And in order to save time, I must ask you to hold all applause until the end of the evening. Now, it is my pleasure to ask the candidates for City Council member District Four to make their two-minute opening statements, beginning with Mr. Box.
Pressing on mute until the green light goes on. Thank you. It's an honor to be here, ladies and gentlemen, and I thank you for your participation in the democratic process. My name is Stephen Box and I'm running for City Council representing District Four, a place I am proud to call home. It's where I've lived for almost 14 years. It's where I met my lovely wife, Enzi. It's where I came to work in the entertainment industry. Last year, I produced a film that was shot here in Hollywood, and in doing so, we established sustainability standards for the entertainment industry, demonstrating a commitment to encouraging growth and jobs in the entertainment industry and at the same time raising a sustainability standard. Many of you know me from my work with neighborhood councils, from Chatsworth to San Pedro, from Palms to Eagle Rock, ridden my bicycle from neighborhood to neighborhood council, working on issues including our city's budget. We formed Budget L.A. to encourage people to participate in the project. And last year, during the budget hearings at City Hall, I was there every single day for over three weeks, a record that was unmatched by most of our council members. And in fact, while I was fighting for libraries, parks, and the Department of Disabilities, the incumbent wasn't there, either representing the department that he represents or even fighting for any of the others. And in fact, when it came time to vote, he voted to cut the budgets of those departments. So I would contend that the city of Los Angeles is a city in crisis, not just a budget crisis, but a crisis of leadership. And I ask you to listen carefully tonight. I'm not going to offer symbolic solutions to our problems, and I'm not going to ask for more time. I'm going to offer real solutions based on a vision, and that is this: A well-planned, well-funded city, one that delivers city services based on standards, not complaints, but standards that you can depend on. So I thank you very much for joining me here this evening. My name is Stephen Box.
My name is Tom LaBange, and I'm honored to be your council member and serve this city. I'd like to introduce my wife, Bridgette. Thank her for her great support that she's given me. This neighborhood is very important to me. I was born here. My parents grew up. The lighting is bad here, okay? The lighting is bad here, so I think we should stand out here. I don't see any rules about that, but please hold the time. I think that I suggest to all the candidates, step out here because the lighting is bad here.
But everybody spoke there already, so you should respect everybody else.
There's no rule that you said you can't stand out there. The lighting is bad here.
Yeah, we didn't anticipate that or any bats in the room either.
Come on, like everybody else, you gotta respect everybody else too. Play by the rules. Not too much last school.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here to serve the people of Los Angeles. I'm proud of my heritage. I'm proud that I've been able to serve this city. In 1972, I went to a meeting in the auditorium. Was anybody in this room here then? It was the fight to save this school because the wrecking ball was going to take it down. They were going to build a new ugly high school down on Griffith Park Boulevard. But we fought, and I was led by Nina Mohy, Cheryl Bowler, Alberta Burke, and Joanne Gabrosen, four women. That was the first meeting I attended. First meeting I attended, I remember that. And through the years, I've been able to help this city in so many ways in collaborations. Thanks to Tom Bradley, I was on his youth council. I was on his youth council with Mark Thomas before he was Mark Ridley-Thomas. I was on Peggy Stevenson's staff, John Farrell's staff. I worked for Dick Whitten. I brought it back to this neighborhood in so many ways, and that's why I'm honored to serve you. I ask you for another four years because I make a difference. I collaborate and work with people. I help people. I've been a part of the neighborhood movement. The city is the city of great neighborhoods, and it's not a crisis. It's a challenged city right now, just like our federal government is. And I stand behind our president, and I hope they can work it out this week because it's going to be tragic if the federal government exercises what the Republican leadership want to do. I don't want to see the government shut down. I want to make it work for all of you, as I have, like Ann McKean and Jim McKean, other people in this room who I've helped over the years. It's very, very important. Gene Bauer helped save that beautiful Elks building down at Magarson Park where the fourth district used to run downtown. All these things give me a great opportunity to help people, and that's what Tom LaBange is all about. And this is a challenge. This is a challenge, but I hope you realize it takes experience. And tonight, you'll hear who is supporting Tom LaBange, and many of you are, which I thank you. So we look forward to a robust forum tonight, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters, but I also want to thank the Greater Griffith Park Neighborhood Council and all neighborhood councils for their continued effort and neighborhood associations to make our city a better place. Thank you very much.
Standing up if you like. You can stand up if you like in grandstand or you could... To be respectful here, if you want to have a debate, if you want to have a forum that's respectful to everybody, it'd be nice if everybody stayed in their place instead of having these musical chairs and having candidates walk in front of the other candidates as they speak. If you do choose to stand, please don't walk in front of the other candidates. Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. O'Grady.
Get her in front. We can see right there.
Turn off just for a second. League of Women Voters, which I support, Ron, the people in the back can't see us. The lighting is bad, so I would just suggest that you allow us to stand in front. Is anybody object to that?
Stand in front in the middle, don't walk in front of the other candidates. Thank you.
One second. I want to apologize. This is a public school. This is the best that we can do. Sorry.
Then let him do it again, man. I mean, that's not right. Let him do it again.
I'd just like to say one thing. We do have a rule about applause. Please hold your applause at the end. The reason for that rule is that it takes time if you applaud. It also takes time if you get up and move around a lot, and all of that takes away from the number of questions that we can ask. We feel that our top priority is asking the greatest number of questions. Mr. O'Grady?
Thank you. Thank you very much. My name is Tomas O'Grady, and I'm running for City Council. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. I was born and rear in the west of Ireland before moving to Los Angeles. My wife and I, Justine is over here, restored old brownstones in a place called Hoboken, New Jersey. America has been good to me and my family. America has worked for me. I came to the United States with $80 in my pocket in 1991, and I just finished a new home in the hills of Las Felas. And now I'm running for City Council. My story, though, is no longer possible for most people in this country, and I would submit it's impossible for most people in this city. Whether you're trying to get a decent public education, even basic library service, or trying to open a small business, this city has failed all but a few of us. So I'm trying to change that. That's why I'm running for City Council, not to be a politician, but to be a public servant. Being a leader is not photo ops or pretending to plant a tree, pretending to fill a pothole. It's about courage. It's about a willingness to be unpopular, and above all, it's leading by example. That is the extent of my platform, leading by example. I've committed to cutting my salary in half, not because it's going to make any difference. I get that. But somebody's got to start somewhere, start to bring government back into equilibrium. We are in trouble in this city and in this country, and that's why The Los Angeles Times endorsed me over the other candidates. They like the idea of leading by example. They like that sincerity, and I believe if I start there, this frugal approach can permeate all through City Hall, and we can finally get our city back on track to being, when I was growing up in Ireland, the most exciting city in the world. So my name is Tomas O'Grady, and I respectfully asking for your vote. Thank you.
Next question, we're actually going to hear Mr. O'Grady. First, you can say standing if you see it as you like. Just don't walk in front of the other candidates.
Did I do?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. We want to talk about a couple of allies' favorite issues: parking and traffic. And the question is, how would you address the problems from parking and traffic on major boulevards in the district like Hollywood Boulevard, Franklin Avenue, and Hillhurst Avenue?
I think I've come full circle on this. I used to think the way to do it was to force people out of their cars and onto mass transit. We cannot do that until which time as we build mass transit. So number one, if we can get this 30-10 plan going, when we end up with a system that everyone can use, then that would be solved. Frankly, in the meantime, we need to build some parking garages. It's getting kind of ridiculous in Las Felas, for example, and I know it's not the most environmental answer, but on which time as we build a system that we all can use, we're going to have a parking issue. And it's the same for our traffic. The 30-10 plan is a well-designed plan, and we need to get the money to do that, but in order to do all of that, we need to restore trust in government. People are not in the mood anymore to pay for big projects. Why? Because they keep hearing about all the fraud, about all the waste. That's one of the things that I'm trying to do, to can restore trust in government. I think people will be willing again, just like they were back in the '30s, to build these large infrastructural projects so we can get our city back on track. Thank you.
Want to ask a question again?
The question is, how would you address the problems posed by traffic and parking on major boulevards in the district like Hollywood Boulevard, Franklin Avenue, and Hillhurst Avenue?
Number one, Silver Lake walks. More people have to walk. Las Felas walks. If you live in the neighborhood, try to get... I have a buddy who lives in the neighborhood. He loves to walk over to Farfala. He loves to walk over to the restaurants on Hillhurst. That's an objective we all must do. At the same time, too, I'm proud when I was appointed by then Mayor Hahn to be on the MTA board. I fought in a collaboration with the city of West Hollywood, Santa Monica, Culver City, and Beverly Hills to get the summary discussion going again. We weren't thinking that way. Now, the mayor wants it to go out to the sea. I wanted to go down to USC, not only just Wilshire Boulevard, which is the busiest bus line in the city, but also down Vermont to connect to a very busy, thriving community. As well as this area here has to find a future extension, and I'm looking to this young student at John Marshall High, and thank you for being a barrister, that we must look to the extension through our area to the west because the de facto freeway is Las Felas Boulevard. That is our challenge there. We have to make improvements to the end of the Glendale Freeway to make sure it flows safely through the neighborhood of Echo Park and East Silver Lake, Alvarado Corridor, but at the same time, we have to change some of our habits in doing it. We live in a built environment, and many things have been built behind this. When I went to school here, there was nothing in Palmdale but just a little old airfield. And all that's gone over the years, and the people come through our neighborhood. We have to find ways to balance out, change our lifestyle a little, and walk. And I can tell you, Silver Lake does walk, and Las Felas does walk too as well. Thank you.
If you want to go to the middle or you can answer a question from there.
I think we're right here. Transportation is one of the biggest obstacles to us enjoying our lives in Los Angeles: traffic congestion, our inability to park. We make decisions about our lives based on those limitations. What I would contend is the money that's rightfully yours isn't coming to your streets. For example, the city of L.A. simply doesn't cash the checks for the money that it qualifies for. 60% of all collisions are caused by road conditions, and your streets aren't being repaired. What is happening, though, is other folks are getting your money. For example, about a month prior to Tom LaBange receiving a $500 donation from Eli Broad, there was a proposal for a $52 million project, not in your neighborhood but downtown, a $22 million project, which then became a $52 million project, again, not in your neighborhood. Your money, not in your neighborhood. The real question is why council District Four isn't getting parking structures. They're going elsewhere. They're not coming here. And what I would suggest is you don't have somebody bringing the transportation and parking money to this neighborhood so you get the streets that work and the parking structures that actually would service this community, stimulate your economy, and make it possible for you to live your lives without having to compete for parking spaces.
If you all ask another question, this one might be a question you don't need to use your entire 90 seconds for. I want to ask you about your position on Measure L, which is the measure to earmark a certain percentage of property tax revenues for the libraries and have the libraries pay a greater share of the costs of operating the libraries. So we'll go from Mr. O'Grady first again this time, and Mr. Box second, and Mr. LaBange third for this question. Mr. O'Grady, measure L.
Thank you. Measure L is a result of this letter. This is a letter that the Greater Griffith Park Neighborhood Council wrote to the City Council back in September. I worked with Martin Gomez and Ron Romer, and we identified the money that was needed to reopen the libraries for two days a week. Of course, it had all kinds of cost savings in here like cutting council member salaries, cutting council staff, cutting cell phones, all kinds of wasted stuff. We found the eight million. The result, the result is City Council introduced Measure L, which is an unfunded measure. I am supporting Measure L, of course, because I love libraries and we need our libraries open seven days a week. They're the cheapest product the government delivers right now today. However, the problem is, we need somebody on City Council who's actually going to fund this measure, and I'm going to fund this measure by finding waste. I'm glad to see Wendy Grue has joined me today. She's cutting out cell phones for 60% of our workforce with a savings of $5 million. So I'm going to be focused on cutting out all the waste so we can pay for this measure. And I just wish the City Council had just listened to our letter. We could have saved ourselves all this money to put this measure on the ballot, and we could have libraries open again seven days a week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Box.
Thank you. Actually, Measure L is on the ballot because our City Council advocated on its responsibility. They always had the authority to fund the libraries, and they didn't. And they kicked it to the people. And here's the best part, and I'm voting yes on Measure L. I'm a big fan of libraries. But buried in this measure is small print that says we're going to enhance cost recovery. So the commitment will be approximately an increase of $50 million to the budget for the libraries. At the same time, there's small print that says we're going to charge them $49 million approximately in cost recovery for maintenance, for power, water, for pension and health. These are cost recovery charges that are only being applied to two departments: libraries and wrecking parks. And so what we do is we create the illusion that we're giving the library system something, and then the small print takes it back. So I'm voting yes on Measure L, and the first thing I'll do when elected is make sure the small print of cost recovery is removed so that we don't at the same time take that money back. It's disgraceful. It's an application of responsibility, and it's what you're getting from your City Council. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, but they're both hanging out in the fiction section, not the nonfiction section, okay? 1925, when we formed this city charter, we said, "We're going to set aside for parks. We're going to set aside for libraries because it's a challenge." And we needed that commitment out of the race. Out of the races is the city crew. We said we must fund our parks through annual percentage of the general fund. And in 1999, in the charter reform, we enhanced that. We enhanced it, and we do it again because we needed that commitment. Now, this time, because of the challenge, working with Mr. Gomez, working with others, the Library Guild, working with the Library Foundation in a collaboration, because that's how Tom LaBange has always worked, Bernard Parks, we came up with Measure L. And I think if you roll back the tape to other forums in Silver Lake, and I know Rusty Mallard is here, both these gentlemen did not support Measure L then. So I'm glad they got to the library and they were informed on it to know it's very important. Two things: Vote yes on L for Measure L and vote yes on LaBange for Councilman. Thank you.
Francis' answer, ask it, because she's been reading it. It's written in some pretty tough handwriting to read.
Hello, cryptic. Can the city of Los Angeles afford to take the financial risk involved in supporting a new football stadium? Stadium, excuse me. And I hope you won't just answer yes or no, but explain your answer.
I like go a lot back to history. Remember in the 1920s, what did we work for? We built the City Hall. We built the Coliseum. We had the vision. It is very tough time, so we probably shouldn't even be talking about expanding the convention center and building a football stadium. But yet, if you look at the horizon, and we hope that the day will be better for Los Angeles, there is a discussion, and it has to happen on whether or not there's a stadium built here, whether it's at the convention center or outside in the county. It's a determination that's going to be made by the 32 owners, where they select the team, but right now, they're having this discussion. The mayor has a blue ribbon committee. The council has a CLA working on, that's a legislative analysis, to see if it makes sense. I don't like any taxpayers' money being used, whether it's for the bonds to replace it, but if we could create a dynamic facility like they did in '32, which again hosted the games in '84, we all love the Lakers, L.A. Live, there's a possibility. But I absolutely do not support any taxpayers' money, and I absolutely do not support going down a road that wouldn't work. But at the same time, I think, I think Fleetwood Mac said, "Don't stop thinking about tomorrow. Don't stop thinking about it." And I think tomorrow is important because there's a challenge. You talk about things that have taken place in the past. Thanks to all of you, we built new schools for our bonds because we invested in that. We built new libraries for our city because we invested in that. They had tough times, yes, but you put it before the voters to vote, and that's the issue that's before us right now. So to answer the question, do not support taxpayers' money, but let's absolutely look at it. Thank you.
Mr. Box?
Thank you. I absolutely am opposed to spending taxpayers' money on the nonexistent NFL team in the nonexistent NFL stadium for the plan that doesn't exist. We're already spending money. We formed a commission, and the City Council is spending its time, and believe me, they're on the clock when they do it, pursuing the nonexistent plan. Meanwhile, the folks that sold the naming rights for $700 million and are busy asking the city of L.A. to back a $350 million bond are in Sacramento asking that the standards be lowered for the nonexistent football stadium with a nonexistent team in Los Angeles. What L.A. should be doing is raising the standards so that if somebody comes with a proposal, it benefits the people of L.A., that there's no risk to the people of L.A., and that it's done according to high standards, not just the environmental standards or sustainability standards or economic standards, but that it commits to financial standards where the city of L.A. participates in the profit but at no risk. And that's not happening. What's happening is, we've already hired cheerleaders and are so excited about this at City Hall that they've formed a committee to welcome this nonexistent proposal that doesn't cost any money, but it already does.
Keep the applause to zero if possible between answers.
You know, this is a debate, and I just wish we wouldn't start telling lies. I do wish we would roll back that tape. And Tommy, if you're saying that I said I didn't support L, please roll back the tape. Please call me on it, so. Neither, this is not a debate, Mr. LaBange. Neither Mr. Box or I said we were against Measure L. What we described was, it was a trick on the taxpayer to tell them there's no taxes. It's going to be somebody like me is going to have to find the ways to pay for Measure L. With regard to the football stadium, Justine and I restored brownstones in Hoboken. We brought those brownstones. We didn't go to City Hall for loan. We went to City Bank, okay? And, you know, I'm sorry, the City Council has a habit of loaning money to developers to build things. In New York City, if you want to build a skyscraper, you've got to bend over backwards to please the community boards. You've got to build parks. You've got to do everything in order to have the privilege to develop something so you can make money. In this city, for some reason, our politicians go begging developers and giving them lots of money to come, please build in our great city. So I am vehemently against a football stadium. For God's sakes, we can't even house our homeless people. And these politicians are running over like little kids. They're working on something else over here last week. They heard about this new stadium. It's a new toy to play with for a few weeks to take their mind off what they really should be doing, which is delivering basic products and services that a government needs to deliver. Thank you.
I'll go first to Mr. LaBange. Where do you see the role of the arts in L.A.'s economic growth?
That's why they're talking about a football stadium. That's why they're talking about expanding the convention center. That's why they're creating art. Look what happened at the '84 Olympic Games. How many museum institutions were birthed after the '84 Games from the Olympics Art Festival, which is so important? And understanding history is extremely important, and I'm proud that Aileen Wilson is here. We're classmates from Marshall, and our teammate in school, Mike Haynes, is a member of the NFL Hall of Fame because he got a great education here, and he also had great students that he worked with in this school. Art is extremely important. Jim Burke was a great art teacher here. Schools and participation is so key to this whole thing. Why do people like to come to Las Felas Village? Because of the art galleries that may intersperse the neighborhood, because of the nice restaurants. This is the dynamic village movement that is duplicated throughout the city, but arts are extremely important in institutions. And the greatest of all museums, in my mind, is the great crown of Las Felas, is the Griffith Observatory, the Hall of Science. That, which in 1992, we stood with others to help fight for, to get bond issues for the voters to approve, that helped pay for the renovation and expansion. That museum, among many museums, are part of our culture and heritage, whether it's in the Natural History Museum, in Exposition Park, Alackwell along Wilshire, and all the small museums in between. I'm pro-museums and pro-art, and I've worked very hard to help artists create.
Mr. O'Grady?
A couple of months ago, Mr. LaBange proposed to prioritize Boncel's Art Park. A group of artists from there approached me. They were desperate. They couldn't even get an audience with a councilperson. So I wrote to the Department of Cultural Affairs, and I asked them, "Well, so how much is it going to cost? What if I found a group of people in Las Felas to keep Boncel open? How much would that be?" And what they said? "We have no idea." So the first problem was regard to fiscal matters. This city doesn't know how much it owns or how much it owes. I held a press conference downtown, and we exposed the high salaries that the Department of Cultural Affairs and top management were receiving. The head of Department of Cultural Affairs makes $180,000 a year. You add in all the benefits, you're getting close to a quarter of a million. You add in all the benefits, you're getting close to a quarter of a million. Two positions would have kept Barnsdale open. And the response from city council, as usual, is, of course they kept Barnsdale open, but you're going to need a down-to-earth, honest cheapskate like myself to get into City Hall so I can find the ways so we can pay for Barnsdale remaining open. I'm a big fan of the arts, obviously. Arts can be used to generate tourism dollars. We seem to not get it in this city. When my father-in-law comes to visit, he stays in Santa Monica. Why? Because Santa Monica does such a better job attracting people to the galleries, to their hotels and their restaurants. So, thank you.
I believe the three big economic drivers in Los Angeles that are capable of revitalizing our local economy are the entertainment industry, arts and culture, and tourism. And in all three cases, the city of L.A. seems to do everything it can to not just ignore them, but to interfere with them. They consist of small business operators. Two-thirds of the entertainment industry is simply small businesses. So the things we do tend to be for the large institutions, and we forget that the people in our community that are the artists, that are the performers, that operate theaters, that provide the services that make the arts and crafts move forward, are real people who need support. I submitted a program called L.A. City Works, the idea of a one-stop shop where real people could get help navigating L.A.'s bureaucratic process and the obstacles that we create. And while Mr. O'Grady's talking about Barnsdale and the privatization, the missed opportunity was that there's three departments that have a piece of Barnsdale. So you've got Wrenck and Parks, you've got General Services, and you've got the Cultural Affairs, all grappling in a turf war, scrambling for a piece of the budget, and none of them accountable. And that particular area of responsibility falls under the incumbents committee, Arts, Parks, Health and Aging. Keeping in mind one simple thing, when the incumbent stood on Hollywood Boulevard and said, "Welcome to L.A.", it was to promote a city pass that immediately takes you to Universal City, which is on county property, and then Disneyland, which is nowhere near L.A., and then San Diego. We do such a bad job of promoting arts and culture in L.A. Thank you very much.
Yeah, Mr. Box, the next two questions I'll be asking, you will be answering them first. First question is about, well, here's the question. How would you handle complaints towards businesses from the residents nearby, such as the noise and traffic on show nights that comes from the Greek Theater?
Well, one of the big opportunities for the city of L.A. is to move beyond the complaint-driven city. And the reason we live in a complaint-driven city is because we don't uphold standards just as a matter of business. For example, it takes complaints from people before we'll actually come to take a look at, what is the plan? What are the rules? Who's in charge of enforcing them? And this isn't just noise. We just had a building collapse with a fireman that's killed, and that particular building is now a crime scene, because somehow it made it all the way without being red-flagged, and that building was in violation. And this is all too common. We have cut the budgets of the people who are responsible for enforcing the law, the plan, the codes and the rules. They don't exist. And in some cases, the response is, "We'll be there in forty-eight hours", which doesn't do you much good on an evening time. So the answer is, we need to find the departments that guarantee the quality of life in your community. So if it's building and safety, if it's code enforcement, if it's the LAPD being able to respond to nuisance calls, we're not staffed for it, because we've cut the departments that provide the services that are essential.
Mr. O'Grady, your second on this question.
I'm trying to keep all my answers to action. I talked about Barnsdale, I took action, we have success. My friend Frank Massey for years has been measuring the decibel level from the Greek Theater. And I noticed, Mr. Lavange, on your contribution list, that you've received contributions from the folks, I can't pronounce it, Netherlanders, whoever that name is. So, for some reason, in this city, it's who you know rather than the rules. I don't understand why the Greek Theater gets away with playing loud music above the proper decibel level. Either they're breaking the law, or they're not. It's one or the other. And I think there's way too much personality in this city. I often hear, we talk about the neighborhood council. Let's call Tom, maybe he can do something. And in fair play to Tom, Tom often does do something. But that's the problem right there. We need a city of rules and regulations. It shouldn't matter whether you know Tom or not. You should be able to pick up the phone, somebody is playing music after a certain amount of time, and the law is clear. I ran into this. I've been trying to get rid of gas blowers in our neighborhood. It's just, you know, it's a free-for-all. Thank you. And I'm glad to report that in our neighborhood, we're at one-hundred percent compliance in gas blowers, which is breaking a noise level. So with regard to that, we need to take personality out of this. I promise you, I'll be the most boring politician of them all. It'll all be very in process. It'll all be either it is or it isn't. Thank you.
Thank you. The Greek Theater, the Hollywood Bowl is in this district. They're great venues. And they do have regulations, and they do work it out. Mr. Massey has a beautiful home, right Frank? Right above the park. And remember, when you live next to the park, there's one thing you've got to expect. People, and people do get entertained at the Greek Theater. And sometimes rock and rollers play it too loud, and they should be held back on that. But over the years, we've worked with the Greek Theater Association, with the Las Feliz and Pribet Association, with the Commonwealth residents, with the additional security down the street to try to calm that. And Frank, has it gotten any better, Frank?
No.
I'm asking Frank. I'm asking Frank. I'm asking Frank. So Frank doesn't believe though, so that's okay.
I want to say...
Oh, please, sir.
Wait a second, I'm asking him a question. It's my... Frank, what do you want to say?
Just have the candidates speak.
Wait, wait, Frank, Frank, I know. Frank, you want to say anything? Okay, anyway, Frank, you were called out by Mr. O'Grady. I wanted to say that I've worked with you over the years to try to solve these problems, whether it's near the Hollywood Bowl. We enjoy these venues, and they're important to us, but at the same time, there's noise. There's noise when they play golf, quietly, when they miss the putt. They yell out a name, usually. They have to go to church on Sunday, their temple on Saturday, to correct themselves for that. But they yell next to a park. They play sports next to a park. All this is a factor. But I've worked with everybody to solve it, and I'm proud of both those venues.
All right, thank you. One more question to Mr. Box, Mr. Lavange, and Mr. O'Grady in that order. Talking about parking structures. Where in the district will you advocate for the city to build parking structures? Griffith Park?
No. Well, there's some lovely village environments that could use parking, and there's some lovely proposals for underground parking with perhaps green space or open space on top, so that we're not just creating more visible parking, but actually creating a more livable community. I do think the parking needs to be where the small businesses need them. And there's some great opportunities, for example, the old Brown Derby down by Hollywood Boulevard. And so one thing we don't do well is manage our assets. There are some communities that do it well, and they drive the success of the local small businesses. There are actually an abundant number of parking spaces, seven per car in L.A. County, just not where you need them, when you need them. But if you were to ask a locations manager where to park all of the vehicles, if a production were shooting here in the neighborhood, they'd be able to park all those vehicles, because they learn to get along with the people who have parking. And there are some great examples of opportunities where we could work together with people to use parking that's not being used at the moment that we need to use it. So restaurants, and then businesses that open during the daytime, for example. That's one of the opportunities that was used in the mid-city area. There are examples for short-term solutions, there are examples for parking structures funded by money that the city of L.A. has in place, but absolutely noted Griffith Park with regards to parking structures.
It's very important that we look at Las Feliz. This is a thing for you, Ron. The post office, United States Post Office is selling many of their facilities. That's very key, that you get on top of that, wrap around what could or couldn't be there, because they are selling their properties. Also, we should, if I could, I would love to buy the old Mason Hall at the northeast corner of Vermont and Franklin, and try to combine that. That has property there that probably could deal with the addition of parking there. Be sensitive to the neighbors on the back street. Also along Hollywood Boulevard, where the old Court Fox Ford, Hollywood Ford is, I want to see Fire Station Thirty-five expand it there. But also, whatever development is built there, near Lyman Place, down to Hillhurst, that they find additional parking. And work with Children's Hospital and the hospital complex. Work with Eric Garcetti, who strongly endorses me, which represents the hospital complex area and Barnesdale area. I only wish the subway stop was at Vermont and Hollywood Boulevard. I think that would have been a greater gateway into Barnesdale Park, so people have an option on that. But it didn't happen. I think another key thing, as we look to the future, is all of the Barnesdale Shopping Center. How that's redeveloped, how to make it more village-friendly, as opposed to what is a nineteen-fifties style that is seen there. So these are things that we could really work on, Ron, together, and try to find solutions to that. And absolutely no parking structures in Griffith Park. Thank you.
The Melendez Plan cost us four-hundred grand. I could build a parking structure for four-hundred grand. And if I remember correctly, the Melendez Plan had parking structures in it. I have a copy of the Melendez Plan at home. It's four-hundred grand, it's gone forever. Jim Standish, my friend, who owns Alarc Bakery in Silver Lake, he said one of the reasons all the parking meters are not broken, you know why? Because the parking crowded to lay off people. Who do they lay off? They lay off the guys who fix the meters. Meanwhile, of course, council offices are fully packed with staff. The council office, for example, each council office has a press secretary. Dude, you're a councilman, you're not the Secretary of State. You don't need a press secretary. So. And with regard to parking structures, this city, our voters are in no mood to spend money on anything. And you have to ask yourself why, because they keep hearing about fraud and waste. And you want to talk about, I think, eight-hundred-and-seventy-five grand Vermont Triangle. For the life of me, I can't find more than forty grand in that project. It's a rock. It's a rock, it's a couple of benches, and it's a couple of trees. So, if we're going to do all this, the first thing we need to do, get our house in order, fix the things that we have right now today, and then maybe, maybe this city will be in the mood to start investing in it again. So, thank you.
All right, we'll start with Mr. O'Grady on this one, and then go to Mr. Box and Mr. Lavange. It's a question about public safety. With your experience in the community, how would you handle a major disaster at council level? And by major disaster, the person is asking about fires, earthquakes, and riots.
Well, we won't have any riots if we educate our children properly, because they'll be educated, and they won't feel the need to riot, because they're so desperate. So, that's number one, investing in public education, so people have a decent life, and they don't feel that they need to get everybody's attention, because they are so desperate. With regard to emergency services, really, again, this really should have very little to do with the council office. We have a police department, a very professional police department. We have a fire department. Leave it to the guys who know, and take politicians out of this. Frankly, I'm sorry, I think politicians are constantly interfering in this stuff. Chief Bratton, when he was leaving the city of Los Angeles, he lamented. He said, "We get a law passed downtown to do something for public safety, but then we've got to go to each of the council offices to get their blessing." He described councilmen as operating their own fiefdoms. That is not the way I would represent you. I not only represent this constituency, but we need to work with the whole city together. I'm not, I would not be the king of this district. I would simply be a public servant. Thank you.
I'm a volunteer fireman, and I'm a member of our Community Emergency Response Team, Level Three medically trained. And when Griffith Park caught on fire, my wife and I loaded our tour bags and our medical bags on our bicycles and rode down Franklin, which was so congested that nobody was moving for hours. We made it to Marshall High School and set up the evacuation center. The folks walked out of the hills, as you recall. The traffic congestion was so bad that no plan worked. So essentially, it came down to people walking and carrying pets and medicine, and we set up an evacuation center. Our plan is thin. I think the council members' very specific responsibility would be with regards to policy. We have several departments that compete for emergency medical, emergency preparedness funding. What we don't have is a solid plan for emergency preparedness, regardless of what's coming. And if you listen to Lucy Jones from Caltech, "There's a big one coming, and we're not going to be ready. It's going to be bad." What has happened under the current leadership or lack of leadership, as I would say in city council is, we've laid off the people who are our immediate connection for emergency preparedness. So while if there's an emergency, the police would go one way, the fire would go the other, and the park rangers were to connect with us, so that we could take care of ourselves, our neighbors, and our community, and we've, but we've lost them. So our plan has gotten worse, not better, under the current leadership. I don't think that the city council should direct the plan for emergency preparedness, but I think that the city council should direct policy, so that departments responsible are working together and actually have a plan that connects you with an emergency plan. Thank you.
Made a fire at Griffith Park in the afternoon. Overwhelmed the city, resources, challenges. There was a plan, and it worked. And it worked, and it did not burn homes, except one, the roof, Charlie's House, in Griffith Park. Thanks to the water system that DWP put in, that the Las Feliz and Pribet Association fought for. It predated neighborhood councils. But there was a fire before that I went to, out by the Mary Go Round, as a liaison to then Mayor Riordan. And I went to the fire line where Engine Fifty-Six was, and I talked to the active captain, and he told me there's more holes in this line than there are on the golf courses. And I realized that there's a park system and a city main. And we came together and built a forty-two-million-dollar improved system, and it did work. And it did absolutely work to stop the fire from going into Las Feliz. And Wrenck and Parks staff, a million dollars worth of vehicles out of the nursery parked on the Boulevard. And the Red Cross came in here, and I didn't realize that you contributed there, Mr. Box, until we're in this forum here, and the previous forums, and I thank you for it. But many people helped out there. There is a plan. And I see schoolteachers here, and they know that the plan's there, but we have to exercise it. Lucy Jones says shift happens, and that means there's going to be a shift of a plate and another earthquake. Be prepared. And I say that at all my community meetings. We have to be prepared. When the earthquake happened in ninety-four and seventy-one, I was there.
The next question, we'll start with Mr. O'Grady, and then go to Mr. Lavange and Mr. Box. In your opinion, what is the most important service that Griffith Park provides? And do you believe additional work must be dealt to improve this service?
I see Griffith Park, we talk about parks, and we talk about people parks, we talk about comparing it to Central Parks. I think Colonel Griffith had intended the park to be an escape. It's wilderness, to get away from the hustle and bustle of the city. And for me personally, and our four children, we want Griffith Park to be a place where we can go. We don't need any improvements. The trails are there, just want to walk away, get away for a few hours, so we feel that we've gone out into the wilderness for a few hours. But we need, instead, instead of improving Griffith Park, what families like us need, are small-pocket parks closer to the people. Most of the time, Lauren just wants a playground and a slide. And the wrong place to build that is in Griffith Park. The right place to do it is right where the people are. And the same goes for, I know there's all this debate about ball fields and this stuff. You know what? We have all these schools, we already have all these existing assets that we need to use. And can we just leave the park alone once and for all? Thank you.
Griffith Park is a very specific place that by land deed is set aside as an urban wilderness. Not a place for development, not a place to keep getting improved, but a place where people can have free access to the urban wilderness. It's a very sensitive ecosystem. One of the most sensitive, in fact, there's thirty-four around the world. And yet, we keep having to fight to protect Griffith Park from people who have great ideas for how it could be improved. And I even resent the use of the word "improved" when we hear about people and their plans for how we could change Griffith Park. Protect it is what we should be doing, and that includes protecting it from the impact of development that's surrounding Griffith Park. Protecting it from cut-through traffic that looks at Crystal Springs as a freeway alternative. Protect it from things like noise and light pollution, which makes it tough for the animals who rely on that great urban wilderness. It's the largest urban wilderness park in nine states of America. It has a long legacy, and we shouldn't have... It has a long legacy, and we shouldn't have to fight so hard to invoke the Griffith land deed that set it aside as a free refuge for everybody to find a peaceful place. And Mr. O'Grady's correct, there should be parks within walking distance of everybody where they live, small parks they can get to. And Griffith Park isn't the place that needs to be developed, it needs to be protected.
The candidates and I have fought for, got historic monument status, which is very important, very important. Absolutely, this park is very special to me. Every day, every day I hike in the park, I see the sunrise. Every day I climb the Mount Hollywood or another trail to experience it. And improvements are necessary. How about reclaim water? How about getting reclaimed water back into Ferndale to enhance Western Canyon? And work with the community to make sure it's done right. Because right now, there's stakes, although the rain came this year, there's things that are dying because they don't get the water that they used to get. How about reclaim water on Roosevelt Golf Course? How about making these type of improvements so that people could see the environment much better? How about bringing children to the park and having a hike for help like I do every spring? Very important to engage that. I love this park and I grew up in this park. I have seven brothers, we played in the park, we played in the park before the freeway was built. We used to go to the river, the work on the river. I'm very involved in the bike way on the river. I have the experience to help people do the right thing and engage with community in the park process. I'm proud of the observatory, I'm proud of the zoo, and very proud of the chef, Thomas the Tank, and all the work in Travel Town. And if you have grandchildren, they would be proud of it too. Thank you.
We'll go environmental here. The question is, what is your position on renewable energy? Do you support moving L.A. off of coal by 2020, even if it means electric rate increases?
Absolutely have to have a blend of all types of power to bring it right here. Right now, where's our power come? From Intermountain in Utah. Three things run the power side of DWP. Generation, transmission and distribution. Those big transmission lines and their local distribution station, one at Hillhurst and Franklin, one over on Fletcher. At the same time, wherever that comes from, whether it's a gorge up in Owens Valley, whether it's Hoover, whether it's out at Intermountain, we have to change that element. Absolutely push coal aside. Absolutely come up with another blend. Absolutely. I want to see solar on every schoolhouse, I want to see solar on every park building, I want to see solar on every library, so that we have to get off what we would call a carbon footprint and reduce that. I strongly believe in that and am working with Water and Power to do that. But we have to change that. We have to change the weapon that we do. And it's a way that Los Angeles has always tried to look down for the future for Los Angeles. Because we do flip a switch, and most people don't know, how many knew the word Intermountain before where that power plant was? A few. Now, all this system is very important. That has to be changed. And they're 56 miles from the loading station there, they cook in natural gas, it may be an element will be that blend. Because it's a blend, because not every day is sunny in Los Angeles, but most are. But we have to have that blend to work out our power system, and I do support that. And whatever we do, it is an investment, and there may be...
I very much support moving towards renewable energy. Again, it's about leading by example. I live on a green home. I have solar electric, I have solar water, and apparently I'm famous for having a solar-powered Jacuzzi. I mention that not because I think taxpayers should be paying for my solar-powered Jacuzzi, but I'm trying to demonstrate that I like the idea of living with a very small footprint. So therefore, I have credibility when I talk to people. I get it, I live like that every day. I'll go up when you had Inconvenient Truth, Fox News, put a helicopter on top of his house, and they said, "Look at you, you're living in a big mansion, don't be telling us what to do." They can put a helicopter on top of my house any day and they'll see Justine hanging her clothes out on the line, on the porch. So with regard to renewable energy, the way to increase electric rates, and this is on my website, is to change the tier system. Just as we do in the tax code, you make up to 100 grand, you make X amount, you pay X amount, then you change the percentage. For the biggest energy users, that's who we need to be charging a lot more. Give everyone a chance to live within their quota and not a dime more, and that is the way for them to pay for all these, all these new programs just to bring renewable energy. The final problem is the DWP. Nobody trusts the DWP anymore. So even if they were to introduce programs that might even be good, they have lost their trust. We have a rate cards advocate thing on the measures, on the ballot, because the City Council and the DWP, we can't trust them. So we got a third agency we gotta create to watch the other two. So restoring trust, we can get our renewables. Thank you.
I'd like to reframe the question. I do believe that we can come off coal, that we can explore renewables, and I believe it doesn't need to involve a rate increase. I say this because in the spirit of leading by example, I've already met with the new general manager of the Department of Water and Power. He came from a utility on the East Coast where they embraced renewables and reduced utility rates 20%. There is obviously a spike in the cost when you shift from one source to another. But he amortized that so that the rate payer didn't experience that spike, which is what the DWP has always threatened you with, that the transition would cost you more in the immediate. And typically, it does. Then the savings start to roll in as the system settles in. So having met with him, he offered two very specific plans to reduce costs so that we can shift to renewables. The second one was the feed-in tariff, so that if you invested in solar, could you sell the unused energy back to the DWP? Which, by the way, is us. And the old leadership and City Council was unable to figure out how much to commit to because they were afraid to committing too much of your money going back to you. This is a complete lack of leadership, and in fact, the two ballot measures on the upcoming election that address the DWP demonstrate that our current City Council can't work with the current DWP. That must change. So yes, you deserve renewable energy, yes, it should cost less than what you're paying now, and yes, it's possible.
And then Mr. Box and then Mr. O'Grady. A little more local thinking now, we're talking about Hollywood. The question is, Hollywood has changed a great deal in the past several years. How do you envision the future development of Hollywood?
Hollywood was challenged when I first started with the city of Los Angeles. What did they do? What did the whole city do? They built a subway system, $4.2 billion. And if any of you remember those tough motels along Hollywood Boulevard near Western, anybody remember Western Avenue? And what took place on Western Avenue? The subway transformer because it blocked tourists. It changed those best westerns. In addition to the work in Hollywood, the new hotels that have been there, it has made a place to be. And I'm proud that work has been done to bring the tourists. The Mecca between Orange and Highland Avenue and the people who find their way to look at the Walk of Fame that is celebrated its 50th anniversary has really sparked much activity. But much more needs to be done. The backsides of Hollywood Boulevard, Selma, Yucca, need to be improved. This is a way to create, Pasadena did a wonderful job. What did they do first? They got parking structures in Old Town. What did they do second? Give out beer and wine licenses to a variety of restaurants that made the atmosphere on the street much better. That has to be done and encouraged. Hollywood Bowl, I'm very pleased the work that has been done to upgrade the Hollywood Bowl, thanks to all of you and voting for Prop. A and other county measures. In addition, there's been a number of hotels built up on Highland Avenue that has increased that flow. That is a positive. That is a great positive that it works around the Hollywood area. But I would like to see more done on the interior of Hollywood, and I'm very proud of the farmer's market, and I worked with Pompeo Smith to save the market and Mike Wu, so thank you very much.
Mr. Box, you're up.
I love Hollywood. Our campaign office is at 5619 Hollywood Boulevard, and every day, and she's a Hollywood rent-a-car. And every day, it makes my heart leap to watch tourists walking down the street. Sometimes with a little book upside down, going the wrong direction, looking for something they can't find.